We're almost live here. Okay Chairman, we're live now.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for joining this planning commission meeting on today. Today is Wednesday, February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Time is six P M. This is an eight-member board appointed by the City of South Fulton's mayor and council to hold public hearings to make recommendations on rezonings, use permits, and concurrent variances applications, comprehensive land use plan maps, and amendments to the zoning resolution. Citizens may speak for or against a zoning issue, and each side will have up to ten minutes total to present its case. Tonight's virtual meeting, citizens may enter their comments and questions in the YouTube chat or email, planning@cityofsouthfoltonGA.gov. The planning commission's recommendations will be forwarded to the city's mayor and council for final decisions later on the next month. We will proceed with the items on the agenda. At this time, we will ask staff to call the roll.
Roll call. Commissioner Reynolds?
Present.
Commissioner Hadley?
Present.
Commissioner Perry?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Walters?
Present.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Devon?
Present.
Commissioner Weatherly?
Present.
So Chairman, you do have a call.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda will be the approval of minutes from the January's meeting. I will entertain a motion at this time to take a vote on approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Been properly moved. Is there a second?
Commissioner Walters, I second.
Been properly moved and second. Any discussion on the minutes? Your non-staff, would you call the vote, please?
Roll call vote. Commissioner Hadley?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Weatherly? That vote passes.
Aye.
Thank you. That vote passes.
Thank you, sir. Fourth item on the agenda is old business, and there are none listed. We will move into the fifth item on the agenda, which is new business. And that takes us to our first public hearing to consider petition Z twenty-one dash zero zero five. Staff, you have the floor.
So, good evening, planning commission members. So, welcome to our meeting today. We would like for those watching us to submit all of their comments to the planning email address, P L A N N I N G at cityofsouthfoltonGA.gov to participate in the meeting. Rezonings and special use permits will be held next month with council on March eighth for the zoning public hearing and March twenty-second for the regular council meeting. Our first item is Z twenty-one-five. This is a rezoning at the intersection of Campbellton Road and Camp Creek Parkway. Um, the applicant is still working on the stream buffer um, and designing the site, keeping the stream buffers in mind. And so at this time, staff would recommend a deferral to the March meeting.
Okay, were there any comments on this case?
No, there were not.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will move forward with a motion to accept the deferral.
Commissioner Hadley, I'd like to make a recommendation to accept the deferral.
Commissioner Walters, I second the recommendation.
Been properly moved and second. Any discussion? Your non-staff, would you call the roll vote, please?
Yes. Roll call vote. Commissioner Hadley?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Weatherly?
Aye.
That vote passes.
Thank you, sir. Item under new business, item B. We will hear from the petition of Z twenty-one dash zero one four. Also, C V twenty-one zero zero dash zero zero eight. Staff, you have the floor.
Yep. So this item is a request for rezoning is three parcels on Butner Road, and staff is recommending approval with conditions. Quick overview of the site. This was rezoned to T R in the nineties for a nursing home. Um, and so the applicant at this time would like to rezone to O I, which is office institutional, and nursing homes aren't allowed use in office institutional. The applicant would like to rezone the current parcel, that zone T R, where the nursing home is located, to O I, and then the two adjacent parcels directly to the north of the current facility. The future land use for this site is mixed between community live work and rural neighborhood. So a future land use change would be required for the section um, to the north that's zoned rural neighborhood. So there are a few recommendations. Some of them are still kind of the same. For example, that only one curb cut is allowed on Butner Road. Um, we received a new site plan from the applicant on Monday. We wanted to update the allowed square footage to one hundred thousand square feet for it to be a facility for no more than a hundred and fifty beds. And then we want it to maintain the height to one story, given the fact that this is in the rural neighborhood area, and the one-story would fit well with the existing condition. And then concerning the amenities, the site currently has an exterior courtyard and garden area where um, patients and their guests and families and staff can go to get some fresh air. In addition to that, um, there is a concurrent variance. So it's this, basically, the nursing home is already built out. And so in order to maintain some of the in order, it's basically impossible to meet the Clifton Dell landscape strips and buffers, and also some of the other ones for the office institutional since it's already in place and we can't move it. And so the landscape strips and buffers would apply to the existing facility because we wouldn't be able to meet those since it's already in place, if that makes sense. So this is where the facility is. This is what's already built. And then as I mentioned, they want to rezone this from T R to O Y and then expand it north into these two adjacent parcels. And then this is the portion that's zoned local live work. And then this is zoned rural, is this is, the future land use here is rural neighborhood. And so these parcels to the north and then the half of this parcel on the southern part would need a future land use change to be in compliance with the future land use if we are to rezone this to O I. And then, as you can see, this here is zone T R. And then these two parcels right now are zoned A G one. It's adjacent to some C U P, which is for residential subdivision. And there's some mixed use. These are commercial areas here. And then this subdivision back here is residential. This is the current site plan. As you can see, this is the current site plan. As you can see, this nursing home is already here, but these two parcels to the north are currently undeveloped.
You have a piece?
Yes. Bless you.
Can you please mute your, um, can you mute yourself, whoever that is? We are getting feedback, please.
I was able to take care of it. So.
All right, thank you.
And I received a new site plan, but my I received a new site plan, but my presentation is working right now. And so I will pull up that new site plan for you. And, but regarding the rezoning, staff is recommending approval, not deferral. And then regarding the concurrent variances, staff is recommending approval on those also. And I will get that other site plan for you. And that concludes our report.
We're working on that site plan. Um, there any comments attached to this case? Staff?
No, none have come in.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to open public comment?
Well, we will. I am going to open, uh, I am going to put forth a motion to open public comment. I was, uh, interested to see if there were any out there in the queue. But at this time, we will take a motion to open public comment.
Thanks, Commissioner Walters. I make a motion to open public comment.
Second.
Probably moved and second. Any discussion? Your non-staff, could you call the roll vote, please?
Yes, roll call vote. Commissioner Hadley?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Weatherly?
Aye.
That vote passes.
Thank you, sir. We're now entering to public comment. Um, are there any comments for this case? Staff?
No, sir. We do not have any comments for this petition.
Are there any comments from the board concerning this, concerning this case?
I believe the applicant might be on the call.
Is the applicant on the call?
Yes. Um, you, you, you didn't ask for us to speak yet, so I was just waiting.
Okay.
Um, Michelle Battle, yeah, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, um, here representing Pruitt Health. We also have Beth Vega from Pruitt Health on with us as well this evening. I appreciate staff putting up the PowerPoint. If we can go to the next slide. Dogwood Healthcare, um, as indicated by staff, is seeking to rezone the property from A G one and T R to O N I. On the purpose of this is to expand the parking lot, servicing the existing nursing home. Also, there is an addition onto the nursing home, which I will discuss, that will allow for the development of additional private rooms within the facility. We're also requesting the variances that you see set forth below, including the reduction of the side yard in the south property line to thirty feet, the reduction of the landscape strip um, to forty feet on the southern property corner, and then the reduction of the landscape buffer uh, to thirty feet on the prop, um, the south property line, and to allow existing front yard parking. We go to the next slide. Um, this is an overview from Google Earth of the facility. Um, you can see here that we do have the one entrance point off of Butner Road. Um, the building is already established. The parking lot is relatively small, all things considered. Um, and um, what we are attempting to do is to add um, an addition in the area where you see kind of the, the green off to the, I guess, the left of the building um, as you come in, and then additionally add some additional parking, which will show in the site plan. We can go to the next slide. Um, as staff has indicated, um, again, we're, um, have a town home residential designation along with A G one on the two parcels. The next slide, you should see, um, the land use designation for, oops, maybe not. Uh, that's okay. We'll, we'll go back. Nope. Yeah, nope. Go to the next one. That's fine. Um, and you can see here again, the um, current existing um, site plan for the property um, with the one entrance point again off of Butner Road. Um, we have a few parking spaces you can see surrounding, but quite honestly, uh, not a significant amount of parking based on, um, the current use of, uh, the site. Um, if we go to the next site plan or the next slide, you'll see here that what we are proposing really is twofold. One is, um, the parking lot. Now, um, Pruitt does own the next, the, the two parcels that are currently zoned A G. Um, we don't have any plans, um, set for any further expansion at this time. Um, it's certainly possible that maybe in the future, um, there may be some further expansion needed um, on the other balance of the property that would remain currently undeveloped. Um, we clearly understand that if we want to do that, that we will have to come back for some type of modification um, at that time, um, before city council. Um, until that time, what we are looking to do is the expansion of the parking lot as shown um, on the site plan. In addition, uh, we are looking at, in addition to the existing building, um, and that's in the area that's shown. Um, what you may know about Pruitt Health is that there are, this is a, what we now call a skilled nursing facility. The use of the term nursing home apparently is now outdated. Um, and so this is a skilled nursing facility that is not only for those who have, um, long-term needs, but also for short, short-term rehabilitation, um, needs. Currently in this space, there are roughly a hundred rooms. Um, only eight of them are actually private rooms. So that means that, um, the people who are, um, in this facility are actually in a shared room. Um, most of them are shared room spaces. Um, what they would like to do at Pruitt is to expand, um, the building to allow for twenty-four um, private rooms to be developed that will also have private bathrooms. Um, the rest of the facility does not have those private bathrooms. And so that's a real, um, need within this facility. Again, one that was built back in roughly nineteen ninety. So the needs of the residents and the, those who are, um, needing to be in this facility have changed. So this is both a skilled nursing facility and a rehabilitation, um, building. And that basically means that, you know, if you come out of the hospital and you need, um, rehab for a couple of weeks or a month or two, then, um, you can come to this facility. Um, and again, they want to be able to provide, um, those additional private rooms for those who would be visiting um, and staying in the center for that time. One of the things that staff, um, has indicated in its proposed conditions is to limit us to one story. And we are actually asking, um, that for any addition to the existing building, that we be allowed to go up to two stories. Um, we don't have any plans right now. This current addition is actually one story, but to the extent that we would have any further additions, um, to this existing building, um, we would like to be able to have the ability to have two stories. As you can see, most of it is built out, but we're not talking about adding two-story, a second story onto the existing building. Um, at this point, we're talking about any additions that may occur um, that we would like to be able to, to, to have that flexibility, um, if it is determined that that is necessary. Um, and, um, if we go to the next slide, might be only five. Um, this is kind of an interior of the space. Um, you can see here again, the addition um, area that would be added, and those are the additional, um, uh, rooms that would be added to the site. And we go to the next slide. Um, and then, uh, staff had, um, pointed out that we do have an exterior community garden courtyard area um, that's for, um, not only, um, people who are residing within the space, but also for guests and staff that can utilize that. And there's also an interior community courtyard. And the original condition by staff, uh, requested not only a community garden area, but walking trails and paths. Um, that's really not, um, what we feel is in the best interest of this facility. We want to try and keep it and maintain it contained. We do have areas on here already that are being utilized, um, by people who want some outdoor um, kind of respite space where they can just come out and, you know, catch, uh, some fresh air and then go back into the facility to visit with their loved one. We can go to the next slide. Um, this is the exterior courtyard. Um, obviously, this is during winter months. We just took those pictures, so. Um, but during the summertime, you can see, um, there's foliage there and plants and a seating area and just kind of a quiet space for people to come to. Goes to the next slide. Um, that's the port of this year and, and, and the area underneath there where we've got seating areas for people to be able to come out again, um, and catch some fresh air while they're visiting with a loved one. Next slide. Okay. Um, so that is, um, that is our presentation. We also have an indoor courtyard area that provided some information for as well. So with that, we would respectfully request a recommendation of approval, um, subject to the conditions set forth by staff with the one change that we be allowed, um, to have, um, up to two stories for additions onto, um, the current facility. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, staff, are there any comments that are against this case?
No, we have no comments here in the planning email.
Thank you, sir. Uh, at this time, I would ask the board, do you have any questions for the petition?
Hey, good evening. This is Commissioner Weatherly. I do have a question. Um, so nursing homes or SNF, skilled nursing facilities are typically, um, nowadays are utilized based on what the patient's needs are when they discharge from a facility, post-care, and they're unable to step down home. Are we, I just want to be, um, I guess, in the case I missed it, are, is the look to expand based on an increase in acuity? Is that why they're making, uh, single rooms versus the, the paired rooms?
May, may I speak to that, please?
Absolutely.
Okay. Currently, there are only forty-four rooms in this building. It's eighty-two beds. In that, there's only eight private that are typically used for, um, acute rehab, like after you've had a knee replaced or a hip replaced. And the thirty-seven of the rooms are semi-private. And you are absolutely correct. The, um, current needs of, of this patient population is more short-term um, stays for rehabilitation. So the addition that we are planning is twenty-four additional private rooms with, there's some therapy, day room, and dining added to it, which will be more conducive for, um, and they'll be private rooms, but more conducive to rehabilitation-type patients. They'll have their own bathroom. They won't have to go to a common spa. Um, so it's kind of sectioning off one at, like, more acute rehab and then more long-term.
So, just for clarity, does that mean, um, the occupancy of the building will increase then, right? The, the possibility of?
No, ma'am. It's still the, the C O N for the building is eighty-two beds. This current addition, all it is doing is adding rooms. It is not increasing beds at the moment. So the certificate of need is for eighty-two beds, and, and we, we will still have that, uh, even with the addition. It'll just be one person in rooms rather than two people.
And one last question. Any future plans to increase building occupancy with, uh, the addition or with the option of, uh, the, the acute population kind of ebbing and flowing? So if your, if your acute population is low, you know, you're going to take in more patients, or excuse me, yeah, more patients into those rooms? Could your occupancy in, in the future, like, fluctuate?
Absol- well, it could increase, you know, just based on aging population. Um, but we couldn't determine that on our own. The Georgia Department of Public Health issues what's called a certificate of need, and we would have to apply for that and then qualify to add additional beds because, and they are also licensed by Medicare and Medicaid. Um, so that would be our hope at some point, if, if the population trend requires that. But at the moment, there is no additional certificate of need issued in Fulton County, or South Fulton County, excuse me.
And so, ha- having said that, and I'm just talking futuristic, I guess what I'm, I'm looking at is the amount of uh, traffic that could be, you know, if you, so if you were to go up and, and grant that or ask for that certificate, what would be the maximum occupancy based on the physical building that you're proposing?
It, if we're to go to. With the addition is still just eighty-two beds. I'm sorry, am I not understanding?
No. Well, no, I may be asking the question wrong, but thank you so much. I, I think I get it.
I'm sorry. I, I'm, I'll try.
Thank, I have a question, if I can.
Who was this? I'm sorry.
This is Paul. This is Paul at Devon. I have a question.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And I could, uh, mis- could have misunderstood your plans. But, um, is it planned to remove the green area that it, that buffers between the, uh, facility and the residence, the, the homes?
No, there, there's no intent to, to remove any of that. The buffer that's there will remain in place. Um, it's just that because we are changing from, uh, T R to O N I, um, the buffers are different for a office institutional use. And so therefore, we've asked, um, for those buffers to be reduced as they apply, uh, along the perimeter of the existing site.
So you've asked to reduce them?
Right. Um, because again, the, the building itself is already there. So we are, um, simply asking for the variances so that we would not be a non-conforming building as we are currently shown.
Can we go back to the slide, if it's possible, where I saw the greenery and the, um, the residence on the other side? If at all possible?
Yes, ma'am. So I'm not sure all the way what you mean by, what you meant by greenery or residences.
Okay. Uh, I thought I saw, um, some trees. I saw the.
Looking for the Google Earth shot, I believe.
Right, right. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This one?
No.
This one?
Yes. Yes, thank you very much. And you're asking to reduce the buffer that I'm, I'm currently looking at?
So we're not, we're not asking to do anything to the buffer. It is that the buffer that is currently required under O N I is larger and would actually cut into the building itself. And so what we are asking is for the buffer to be consistent with what's on the ground now. So what you're seeing there, we're not trying to interfere or take away the buffer as it applies adjacent to those single-family homes. It's just that the buffer, again, in O N I is greater than the buffer in the T R zone.
Okay. And I guess my concern, and maybe, uh, I, I'm, I'm looking at this wrong, is how close will you, how, how close will you be to the residence?
We're, we're not, we're not coming any closer to the residence. Our building is coming out where you see, and I, I, unfortunately, I can't point to it for you, but
Okay.
we're, we're going in that area. Uh, if you can go back, um, you're right. No, 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 no. If you can just point to the building and then the green space right in front of the building.
Up there.
That's where the building, no, but, well, that, some of that is where the, right, right there, where that pointer is, is basically where the, um, building addition will be. And then the parking lot will be further north. It's not going towards the building. You can see that on our site plan. We're not moving towards the home. We're moving away from the homes. Towards the street. So we're not taking any, we're not trying to, um, do any type of development in the area where the homes are. It's that the buffers under the T R, when this was originally built, those buffers were not as large as the buffers that are now required under, as we're changing zoning to O N I, because it's a non-residential use. T R is a residential use, so those buffers are, um, not as large. TR is a residential use, so those buffers are not as large.
Thank you.
We're decreasing those buffer. I'm sorry, this is Chairman Reynolds, a question for the petition. To decrease those buffers in your, and you pointed out that you would be going toward the street?
If, if we can go back to the site plan?
No, you're, you're, you're headed, you can stay there. You're headed north. You're headed, right. I just want to make, make certain that we still have some space where the street is and it's not intruding into that area.
Now, if we can go to the site plan, I think it, it is clear that we are not trying to do anything that is moving towards the residential community.
Resident is not my concern on that side. It's the street.
No, we're not moving into, there is a buffer along the front perimeter. I think it's fifty feet and we are maintaining that.
You're maintaining that fifty-foot buffer?
Let me take that. Yeah, let me see if I can answer that for him, Michelle, because we had this same conversation. My name is Skeet Graham, civil engineer on the site. And unfortunately, the, we, I'm unfortunate, we had the same discussion with Cliftondale. The Cliftondale overlay district is what drives a fifty-foot buffer. And the southern portion of the bottom half of that, with the building where it is right now, we, we are a non-conforming use. We were, we were suitable at the time the TR zoning was done. But the Cliftondale overlay, as Michelle has said, actually pushes the buffer in there. So we're, we're not really changing the buffer on the south side. We're just trying to make it fit the O I and the Cliftondale overlay district in both the south side. And then there's a short piece along, if you'll notice where the pond is, is shown up towards Buttoner Road. There's a short section there as well. And, and we're not moving or changing the pond or changing the buffer or altering any of the green that's, that's there at this point. It's, unfortunately, it's just, that's the only way we know how to be in conformance with the new O N I and the Cliftondale overlay district is to ask for the variances for and what the existing use is.
Well, you're asking for variance, but your plan is not to do anything.
Yeah, that's correct, because, because we are, we are already there. As Michelle has said, there's, there's not a change. There's not a change along Buttoner Road with the landscaping that's there or the buffers, the natural buffer. There's not a change in the buffer that's shown on the southern part of that, of the site. It's literally just a, for lack of better terms, it's a clerical request so that we can be a conforming use inside the O N I, once you've given approval on the change in the buffers.
And so let me, let me tell you what the significance of that is and why we're asking for it. For example, if there were some type of property damage, let's say that there was a fire on the back part of the, of the facility. Under the current zoning setbacks under O N I, if we don't get the variance, we technically would not be able to rebuild that section of the building. Because it would be within the setback. The only thing we would be able to do is to come and ask for a variance at that time to be able to rebuild that section. So what we're trying to do is make sure that from, particularly from a financing perspective, that we are changing our zoning and we need our building to be compliant with all of the district regulations. And to the extent that we're not, we're asking for the variance because the existing building is not moving. We're not trying to move closer to any of the boundary lines. We simply want the existing structures that are there to be in compliance. And the only way for us to get there is to ask for the variance. So we, we're not trying to do, if you look at that plan, and then, Marissa, if you can go to the plan before the existing. You can see, we're not coming outside of the, the footprint of that building. Where, where we're putting in the new additions are where we're expanding the existing parking lot north. And we are putting the addition in the area where you see it says like flagpole and bushes and approximate location of a sprinkler system line. That's the area that's green space where we're actually putting the addition. So we're not moving towards the back end or the, the south or the east of the building. We're moving north of the building.
Okay, you can understand a concern when you're asking for something, but you don't plan on doing anything with. It throws up a red flag to me.
Well, what, in, in this instance,
Understand, I do understand what you're saying as to be in compliance, you know? But again, when we, when we ask for something, you know, I don't want to say, hey, if you, if you're granted something now, that's just saying with intentions later, you can do something that may not be conformative into, to what is being stated today. We just need to be on the same page. That's all.
Understood.
Okay, one other question that I had too was about the two-story. Does that fall in line with the Cliftondale overlay?
I believe two stories are allowed in Cliftondale, yes.
Is that true, staff? And forgive me, I didn't have an opportunity to look that up myself. I would have, but if that's known.
Cliftondale overlay does not have a height requirement.
It does not have a height requirement. Thank you so much. No, are there any other questions from the board?
Yes, I, I have one. Since you brought up the two-story, which I was, I was, I am concerned about, what is the purpose? You said the two-story is in the future if you should need it. Are you planning to, to build your two-story now? Maybe I should start there first.
Um, the existing proposed addition, I mean, sorry, the proposed addition right now is a single story. We are simply asking for the ability to have two stories onto this existing structure if at some point it, there appears to be a need for that. Miss Vega may be able to expand a little bit further on that. But there's no, the current intent here is for this addition to be a single story, I believe.
Correct, including the proposed addition. But what we would like to be able to do at some point, for example, we are starting one in Valdosta, it would be adding, we're putting on a second story. It, it, it is a way to add additional residential space and living space for the residents without taking up any green space or other use of property.
And I think that's important because if you look at the areas and, and the fact that you all, and it sounds, at least, at least one of the council members, our commissioners doesn't want us to, to move into the green space areas, particularly those adjacent to the residential. It is better to go up than it is to go out, to try and utilize more land. When we have the opportunity to add a story, particularly in an area where homes certainly in that area can be two to three stories. We are one story currently. That additional story would not be more than the homes in this area could already account for. Sorry.
But we are talking about homes versus a structure, right? A building.
Correct, but again, no, no doubt, but under the Cliftondale overlay, you certainly are allowed to have more than one story. You know, again, this is not, we don't feel like what we're asking for is, you know, over the pale. We just feel like, you know, we want to have that flexibility to be able to go up instead of going out.
Do believe that with that flexibility, I do believe that there should be a cap on how high you can go. But as it stated by staff, there was no height restrictions in the Cliftondale overlay. We, which is, which is concern.
Well, let me, let me correct myself. So the Cliftondale overlay says that the maximum height is thirty-five feet.
Okay, thank you so much.
So one story is roughly fourteen feet.
Right. Long as there is a, as long as there, there is a height requirement attached to that, then, you know, we don't see in the future of something going up past that, which, you know, we want to make sure that we are vigilantly watching. So with that being said, with that being said, are there any other questions from the board members at this time? If not, we entertain a motion to close public comment.
A quick question, yes, sir. Does the, the way that it is written now in the Cliftondale overlay? Is that, is that a problem? Are we, are we good on that?
Well, the visit is written with the height restriction at thirty-five feet, I think, was stated. We would have to consult with the Cliftondale Overlay Association to see exactly where they're, where they are on that. But as it is written, I don't see a problem.
And this is Commissioner Walters. I just have a quick question with regards to the communication to the surrounding communities within, within the designated notification zone. If the original notification went, was specifically for increasing parking and that change has now, now includes a new structure, does that require any further communication with the community?
We had two meetings with the community, I believe, and at, at both, well, at least I know the, I don't have the in front of me, but I believe that they were notified of the modifications to the proposed project.
Right, the reason I asked that was I'm sorry?
As I know they were discussed.
Okay, the only reason I ask that is because the, the notification that was provided in the packet was from July last year. And I don't know if that was the last meeting or the first meeting. But that, that notice specifically talked about just increasing parking.
The second notice that went out, we had a meeting on December seventh, and it had rezoning to allow for the expansion of the existing parking lot and facility.
And was that attended by anyone from the community?
The, the whole, we met with the Cliftondale Board of Directors.
Okay.
And then, and then, and I'm sorry, then in Sep-, I believe it's September, but between, we realized in July that, that there was an issue, the way the notices went out. So we held a second meeting. And then there was a gentleman that lives right across the street from the facility on Buttoner Road and one of the residents from the homes to the east of us. And the only concern at that time was the resident that lived on Buttoner Road was not excited about the placement of the second entrance where we had it. And so it, it, it turns out by traffic studies and, and looking at things, we don't even need the second entrance. So we took that off the plan.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for that, for, for the explanation. Appreciate it.
With that being said, are you stating that there's going to be only one entrance to this facility?
Yes, and that's what is currently required under the current TR zoning conditions. And that was discussed with staff and we are maintaining that one entrance point as requested.
And you did say that you had a meeting in December and those updates were all discussed at that meeting?
Yes.
All right, any other questions? All right, with that being said, I would entertain a motion to close public comment at this time.
Hi, this is Commissioner Walters. Make a motion to close public comment.
Commissioner Hadley, I second.
Been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? You're in non-staff. Would you call the roll, please?
Roll call vote. Commissioner Hadley?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Weatherly? That vote passes to close public comment.
The comment is now closed. And I guess we can move forward and entertain a motion on this case. Board members, if you would.
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion, Commissioner Hadley, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval in harmony with staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Jones, second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion on this matter?
Yes, this is Commissioner Perry. I, I'm in favor of all the recommendations, but I do agree with the applicant to let them go up to a, a second story as long as they don't exceed the overlay height requirement. I'd rather have them go up than, than go out to the green space. Is that possible to, to allow that with all the other recommendations?
I do believe right now we are actually voting on them all. Is that correct, staff?
Yes, you're able to make a motion to approve whatever condition it is that you feel suits the site.
Right, so we are, we are entertaining a motion on each of the petitions. Twenty-one oh fourteen, twenty-one oh eight. We're voting on both of those together.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, sorry. So it's Z twenty-one fourteen and C V twenty-one eight.
Yeah, correct. So that will, Commissioner Perry, that will cover what you have just stated.
Or if you wanted to, so if you want to, I think you can make a motion. I think you can vote on, you can vote on the rezoning request and the concurrent variant separately. But when you vote on the rezoning request, you should say, I want to make a motion to do X, Y, Z with this rezoning case with X, Y, Z conditions, if that makes sense. And then you vote on the concurrent variant separately.
So with, with the motion, possibly the language should have been stated that recommend of approval with staff recommendations on Z twenty-one zero one four and C V twenty-one zero zero eight. Could it be read in that manner? Instead of having two separate motions?
So I'm going to defer to the city attorney's office for a best recommendation on that.
Best recommendation would be to have two separate motions.
Okay. All right, so again, Commissioner Hadley, your motion is to approve with staff recommendations on which petition? Let's start with first First of all, excuse me, before you move forward, Commissioner Hadley, do we have to rescind that motion or how do we do that?
Can you restate the original motion?
Would you repeat that?
The original motion, Commissioner Hadley, can you repeat it?
Yes, the original motion was to recommend approval in harmony with staff's recommendations.
Okay, you didn't identify a petition number. So that's what led to the question that we were voting on them all, voting on both at the same time simultaneously. So the attorney states that it would be best to have two separate motions. So what I would do and say that I'll entertain a motion on petition Z twenty-one zero one four. Let's vote on that motion. And again, I guess Commissioner Hadley's motion applies to the Z twenty-one zero one four. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to restate it if necessary.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a, a recommendation to approve. Uh, I'd like to make a, a recommendation to approve, uh, with staff's recommendation for case ZZ twenty-one oh four.
Okay, let's get the, let's get the, uh, case right, Commissioner.
Excuse me, did I say that wrong?
Yes.
Okay.
Z twenty-one dash zero one four.
I would like to make a recommendation to approve, uh, in harmony with staff's recommendations for case Z dash twenty-one oh four.
Okay, the petition is Z twenty-one dash zero one four.
Excuse me. Commissioner Hadley, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve, uh, case Z twenty-one dash zero one four in harmony with staff's recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Commissioner Walters, I second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? You're in non-staff, would you please call the roll vote?
Roll call vote. Commissioner Hadley?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Weatherly?
Aye.
That vote passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will entertain a motion for petition Z C V twenty-one dash zero zero eight.
So moved.
There are second.
Commissioner Hadley, I second that.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? You're in non-staff, would you call the vote, please?
Yes, roll call vote. Commissioner Hadley?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Weatherly?
Aye.
That vote passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Hadley.
May, may I ask one question? I'm sorry, for clarification. Um, I, I understood the motion was to be approved with the staff recommendations, although I've thought one of the commissioners indicated, because it's up to thirty-five feet in Clifton Dell, that that, that recommendation did not, that he recommended that recommendation not be included. Could someone please explain to me? I'm sorry, I just want to understand. You just said officially, I just want to make sure I understand.
Well, actually, public comment is closed, this matter is closed, but I don't, I think that, uh, it was stated that going up two stories wasn't going to be a problem.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to understand with staff recommendations, I didn't hear that that was taken off, so I just wanted to have clarification. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I stopped that, you did state that that vote passed, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. Which takes us to the next petition on the agenda, uh, which is to consider case Z twenty-one dash zero one five, seventy-two forty-five Bessata Drive, seventy-three twenty-one Bessata Drive. Uh, staff will have the floor. Staff muted? Did we lose Marissa?
Nope, I was talking up the storm on you. I'm sorry. So, um, this is a petition to rezone from AG one and C one to R five for the purpose of developing a single-family detached residential subdivision. The proposal is for a total of ninety-five homes. And the future land use is split on this site, so some of it is, is suburban two neighborhood, and some of it is, um, community live work. So the part that community live work will actually require future land use change if the rezoning is approved. So next slide, this is where it is. So it's at the intersection of Beth's Data Drive, um, and Beth's Data right here. There's a little church right there. And then, next slide, you can see that the current zoning is AG one and C one. And this C one, I, a long time ago, someone wanted to do like a woodworking shop in their backyard, and so Fulton County Board of Commissioners decades ago allowed them to rezone this to C one. So that's why that's there. And then we can see that the future land use on this one is community live work. And, um, this parcel here is split between community live work and suburban two neighborhood. Um, here's a copy of the site plan that we have on file. It includes a walking trail. There are some speed tables there. Um, the applicant intends to stay out of the stream buffer. And staff recommendation on this one is approval with the conditions in your staff report.
All right. Thank you very much, staff. Uh, at this time, we will entertain a motion to open public comment. Board members?
Hi, this is Commissioner Walters. I make the motion to open public comment.
There are second.
This is Commissioner Perry, I second it.
They're probably moved in second. Any discussion? You're in non-staff, would you call the vote, please?
Yes, roll call vote. Commissioner Hadley?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Weatherly?
Aye.
That vote passes to open.
Thank you, sir. As we enter into public comment, is there a petition online with us tonight?
Um, Michelle Battle with Battle Wall.
All right, Ms. Battle, let's hear from you.
Um, if we can have the PowerPoint put up by staff, thank you. Um, as staff has indicated, this property is at, at Bessata, uh, Drive. We are seeking to rezone from AG one to R five for the ninety-five single-family detached homes, um, at a density of one point nine five units per acre, um, which is significantly under, um, the suburban, uh, two neighborhood future land use, which allows up to, um, five units per acre. And we are providing for a walking trail, uh, along with, um, preserving the, um, existing, um, stormwater, not sorry, um, the existing stream buffer, um, at a hundred feet, um, on either side. Um, and so, um, with that, we'll go to the next slide. Again, you can see here where the property is located, here off Bessata, uh, Road and Bessata, uh, Drive. You can see that, um, most of the property within our block is undeveloped. Um, you do have some other subdivisions that are further south, um, of the site, um, that are, um, within the community live work area, which also allows for, um, a higher density than what we have typically seen in, um, the rural neighborhood areas where you're at, um, no more than two units per acre. Go to the next slide. Um, this is just showing again, um, both the land use and the, um, AG one designation is set forth by staff. Next slide. Um, on the site plan, you can see here that we have two points of entrance. Um, one would be off of the State of Road, and one would be off of the State of Drive. Um, again, we are preserving the green space through the center, um, of the site along with the stream buffer, um, with, um, uh, uh, two stream crossings, um, being proposed, um, particular stream crossings that will be proposed. Um, the site is a total of forty-eight point seven, uh, eight acres, and again, we're only at one point nine five units per acre. Our minimum lot width, uh, area will be seventy-five hundred square feet with a minimum lot width of sixty feet. Um, preserving the twenty-foot, um, front yard, um, setback, along with the five-foot, um, stagger that's required, um, the seven-foot, um, side yard, um, set forth under, um, the district regulations, and the rear yard of twenty feet. We have had, um, community meetings, um, with the community with regards to the project. We also met with church, um, to discuss, um, the project. I actually spoke with someone from the church today, um, again, and, um, the issue, um, certainly raised by them being the most proximate, um, property owner with, uh, kind of surrounding their property, um, was concerns that they had about the, um, entrance point off of Bessata, um, drive. At one point, they had actually tried to purchase all or some portion of this property, but the purchase price was not, um, suitable, uh, for them. Um, they have looked at and considered, um, either expanding their existing facility or possibly relocating. Um, we have talked to them, um, in regards to the kind of their future plans there. Um, but, um, we will be meeting with them to resolve any questions that they have with our engineer concerning, um, the drive, um, or the street entrance off of Bessata, um, drive. They just want to make sure that we are not in any way encroaching into their stormwater, a detention pond that's, uh, located, um, roughly in the area shown. So we are working cooperatively with them. Um, otherwise, we can go to the next slide. We will see the product, um, that we are looking at, um, developing on the site. Um, these are some of the home, um, that we are looking at in terms of, um, development. Um, this home is a roughly thirty, uh, three thousand square feet, four bedroom, three bath. Um, this is a three-car garage. Um, and go to the next slide. Um, this is another floor plan, uh, twenty-seven, sixty square feet, um, four bedroom, three and a half bath, two-car garage. Um, again, breakfast area of fireplaces, vaulted ceilings, walk-in closets. Um, next slide. Um, another, um, proposed, uh, floor plan, building. Next slide. Um, these homes, um, we're looking at brick and stone for size, um, with fiber cement siding, uh, on, uh, three sides. Um, we will be offering four-sided brick, um, twenty-five-year high-quality weathered wood shingles, um, vinyl windows. Um, the unit sizes will be between two thousand six hundred and eighty square feet to roughly three hundred, uh, three thousand one hundred and fifty-five square feet with four and five-bedroom units. Um, garages will be available with two and three-car garages. We anticipate the, um, price points starting, um, in, uh, the low three hundreds, although, um, as the market continues to adjust, we anticipate that that amount will continue to move upward. Um, if this project were approved, um, we would look at about twelve months, um, for us to finish the infrastructure. Um, and then six months after that, for the first homes to be available. That does not include probably, um, six to eight months of, um, working with, um, staff on the LVP. Uh, we would be, um, looking to work with local residents who are trying to transition from, um, renting into a new home. There certainly is a need for, uh, new lots. Um, we can see that from the pressure that is now being placed on, uh, resales and, um, people actually asking and paying over list price um, for, um, resales. Um, so we will be looking to add new lots into this community. Again, we're at a density that is well below what is allowed in the, um, la- under the land use designation for this site. Um, again, up to five units per acre, but we are less than two units per acre. So with that, we will respectfully request a recommendation of approval based on the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, now, were there any, uh, comments for this petition?
Uh, we have two. Shall I begin?
Yes, please.
All right. Uh, this comes, is submitted by Lake Lake Royal Estates and Christians for Change Baptist Church, both on District Seven, who will be directly impacted. So I will read as written. The submitters are respectfully requesting consideration of the following concerns in direct reference to the proposed rezoning Z twenty-one dash zero one five. We are presently not in favor of the development as it is. And it's a list of numbers that they have provided. One, quality of homes developer was requested and has not presented previous development experience for the same type slash quality of homes being proposed. Two, traffic, the maximum addition of ninety-five single-family homes with up to three to four vehicles per home replaces significant strain on current road infrastructure. Can the width of Bessata Drive and Road safely include the proposed acceleration and left-hand turn lanes? Three, will the current pumping station being able to handle, be able to handle the additional outflow from the new development? Has this been studied and documentation presented? Four, will the flood control in the area be compromised by the new development? This also applies to the lake. Five, how will the seventy-five-foot easement be maintained during and after development? Six, the homes in the Lake Royale subdivision are zoned R three. What is the reason for rezoning the plot from AG one and C one to R five and not R three? Seven, will the electrical slash water infrastructure of the area be upgraded to support new development affecting the surrounding areas? Eight, where will the children of the new subdivision play? Will playgrounds and green space in the new development be included? Respectfully submitted by Lawrence Hendricks, Lake Royal Estates HOA President, Will Leroy Grimes, Christians for Change Baptist Church Chairman of Deacons. That is the first one. And our second comment is from Michael Venable. I am recommending deliberating conditions for approval of this petition. Because the city land use plan discriminates against residents of the south end of the city by encouraging small homes and small lots. Socio-economic balance has been lost. In order to balance professional, upwardly mobile persons with working-class persons, adjustments to this petition are necessary. By giving up the luxury of an AG zoning and having no active amenity packets, this community needs compensation. The fair proposal is to approve with current petitioner conditions and staff conditions with the additional following conditions. All ninety-five units shall have full masonry funds, brick, stone, stucco. Forty-seven percent or forty-five houses minimum will be constructed with three or four-size full masonry material, parentheses, brick, stone, stucco. Twenty-five percent or twenty-four houses minimum will have side or rear entry garages. All kitchens, bathrooms, and laundry rooms will have stone countertops and hard tile flooring. All first-level floors shall have hardwood flooring. All homes will have floor and ceiling molding throughout the entire house. Understand, if and only if these conditions are mandated in your motion, should an approved recommendation be made. Michael Venable, District Six. And that concludes the comments.
Are there any questions from the board members? I would like to ask the petitioner a question concerning that pumping station. Um, was there a agreement drawn up with the owner or the ones that maintain that pumping station, since it's a privately owned pumping station? Uh, was there an agreement drawn up with the developer and that, um, and the ones that maintain that pumping station? Which is something that needs to be done under the law, under the law.
So we actually were, uh, Thomas Hughes is representing the developer.
So we actually work, uh Thomas Hughes representing the developer. We actually worked pretty significantly with the um uh the city of uh the Fulton County. Water Authority to have conversation around can that uh pumping station accommodate ninety-five additional houses? We actually do have a letter from them uh stating that that uh can accommodate the ninety-five houses. And so we did take the proper channels to ensure before we brought this before the board, before brought for the commission. To make sure that that pump and that that this subdivision could be accommodated with that pumping station.
Well, that's a statement that's saying that it can. Is there a, is that a written agreement?
Yes, we have a written agreement and I actually thought it was submitted with our application. If not, we can submit that.
Yeah, we say that that needs to be submitted. Um, also, the concerns about the traffic. Was there a traffic study done and has that document been submitted?
Uh, so the, based on what we're building, traffic uh study was not required. Uh, what we did get received from the uh. The, the team, the planning team was requirements to add uh deceleration lanes as well as turning lanes and those adjustments were made. Those adjustments were also shared. Um, uh, so unfortunately, certain people weren't able to make that meeting in November. But we shared both that updated plan with the deceleration lanes and the turning lanes. In the community meeting in November and with that addition meeting that we had with the church.
Adding those uh decel lanes, uh you'll be adding those lanes in approaching upon the development, correct?
Correct.
Because you understand that Besada Road is just a two-lane road and it is very. It is not even wide enough for the traffic that's already on it. So traffic is a real concern there in that area. Um, another concern that I heard mentioned, um and I also know is that the uh. There is a lot of wetland back there. A lot of, a lot of streams that are flowing in that area. Um, is a very much, is a ve- is a very concerned that that's going to be disturbed with that this development. And not only that, no amenity package is attached to this development. Um, and as it stands right now, you're, you're proposing to build four and five-bedroom homes. That's, that's going to bring about a significant amount of people. And um, which is going to bring about congestion in the area. School buses are going to be coming in as well. It's going to be a backlog in traffic in that area. Um, even though it is stated that that pumping station will handle the additional ninety-five homes. I do know that the Lake Royale subdivision currently have problems uh with drainage and so forth as it stands right now. So I am not sure how in additional ninety-five homes are going to help. Or not going to impact um the, impact that area. Um, so there is a lot of concerns to consider here. Uh, with the layout of the concerns that was listed uh with the Lake Royale subdivision. And also the conditions that Mr. Venable laid out. Um, I don't know who can speak to that with the uh. A hardwood flooring and molding and so forth within a house. Was any of that a part of the package?
So, so I, I'd like to resp- I'd like to respond to um to a couple of things that you, you have raised. I mean, I think the first thing is um, the city um certainly has identified this area and just. Recently gone through amendments to the comp plan, um that this area is destined for higher density. Um, and we certainly are, are trying to be consistent. Um, what we are asking for is consistent with the current land use and so. Um, one could only hope um that the city is certainly aware of the um challenges um in this area. Um, and that um, you know, plans are being made to address um the infrastructure challenges within the area. Um, there's always that chicken or the egg thing, whether or not the changes come before. Um, the development comes or the changes come with or the changes come after. Um, what we know is that we will do and make whatever modifications are, we are required. Um, particularly with regards to right-of-way um dedication and. Um, any um requirements that are set forth by the transportation department. With regards to um road widens and the like, um with regards to the project. Um, we are certainly not trying to come here and overburden the system, but we also know that. Um, the city has identified this area as one um for higher density. Um, with regards to um the, the homes that are being built. Um, the applicant currently is um working with uh DRB. Um, and a builder that will be um, you know, developing uh the site. And um, it is not typical that I have seen in my time doing zonings for us to get. Down into the specificity of the interiors of the units because. Um, what Mr. Venable may like for himself may not be what the homeowner wants. Um, for them, and um I think that there has to be um some flexibility for individuals who are coming in to buy their home. Decide what they want in the interior of their home in terms of upgrades. Um, and other um, you know, design elements that they want to add. Um, to their home to make it a home for them. Um, and so, you know, I think that the idea of having some requirements with regards to the exterior. Um, in order to um preserve a certain look, um makes sense. Uh, I don't think there's any issue like with the brick fronts. Um, that were mentioned. Um, but I think when we get into um. Literally telling what kind of flooring that you can have in a home, I think that is a step too far, in my opinion. And I certainly um don't feel like that is a part of a, whether a zoning should be approved or not, that we are actually designing the interior of homes. Um, I think that's just a bridge too far, in my opinion.
Uh, may I speak, please?
Hang on one second. I do understand and uh. Um, hopefully that these, those types of things, those types of items are optional um with the builder. Um, so uh again, you just want to keep up with the trajectory of the homes that are already in the area. And with that being said, with the city stating that this area need more density. We are already crowded enough in this area. And so I don't know. Where that came from, but I'm not questioning it. I just know for a fact that. When you start to develop these certain, certain areas. That we have to be real careful, especially an area like this where there's a lot of wetland and any easement. Um, uh, you know, we're looking at. How is that going to affect the church's property or are you going to approach upon the church's property? Uh, in that manner, uh, there are some grave concerns and a lot of questions I don't feel that has been answered. Um, at this point, uh Commissioner, you do have the floor at this time.
I am um, I am concerned about the, the quality of the homes that are being suggested. Uh, in this area and I um, I sympathize with the um existing residents. And the church and, and wanting to be consistent with the community. The question was asked, why, why are we changing, rezoning this area? Um, I do know that it will impact uh Besada. It will um, and the existing um or adjacent. Roads, highways, and uh there, uh, there's a lot to be considered before. Uh, we can look at uh the approval of this project. And the small lots and, and, and the list goes on. So I think we need to really um. Look into this with more detail.
Let me see if I can find a little bit more. Uh, so I would say the lot sizes are on average bigger than what's in the area. The house size on average bigger than what's in the area. We've actually done two water studies, so we designed this um not backwards, so we, we actually did the water studies first. And then designed around what could be built around any issues. We've had two conversations with the church about um, um their borders to protect their church. Which their response was, we can just sell to if you want to buy it. So even if we don't buy, we already had the conversation. On two separate occasions to have a conversation around to ensure that the border for the church is protected. Um, so there's often type potential miscommunications, but. We've at least had multiple conversations with both the engineers and the church around how to protect their land. How to protect the existing wetlands and then how to protect um the subdivision on to the south of us. And so all that was taken into consideration, starting with the wetlands. And we had those studies as well.
And, and I also think when, when we're looking at the homes that are in um Lake Royale and some of the. And the other community on the other side, that the homes that we are building are certainly um. In many ways, a step up from many of the homes in those subdivisions. Um, we believe that. You know, what we are proposing is at a price point in moving. Uh, allowing people who may have come into a, a smaller home or in one of those areas um to step up. Um, we've got, you know, three-car garage units whereas um I'm looking right now on Google Earth on, on Lake Royale. Um, and looking at the homes on that site, that these homes will be um, you know, a step up. From the majority of the homes within the community. And so I think that. Um, you know, to the extent that we still have some work to do, we certainly are, are, are willing to continue that work. Um, but we also um believe that the homes that we are proposing are, are quality homes. Um. And um, you know, we would like to continue to work um with staff um to the extent that. And we feel that the staff recommendation um and the conditions proposed are, are suitable, but to the extent that there's some additional work. We need to do in order to um, you know, bring this closure, we certainly are willing to continue that work.
Very great. And let me also say too that uh, the homes in the Lake Royale subdivision. There are four or five-bedroom homes as well, two-car garages. And um, what is the square footage and, and if you could go back to that site plan, if it's even there? What's the square footage of your rooms in these houses?
Um, we, we were between two thousand six hundred and eighty square feet and three thousand one hundred.
What's the square footage of a bedroom?
It depends. What is of a bedroom?
It depends. So your master bedroom could be a twenty by twenty. Your smallest bedroom could be a fourteen by ten. Um, it really depends on the floor plan.
Absolutely. And the reason I ask that question is because I'm very familiar with four-floor plans. In some of these four plans, these rooms are very small. In order to get the, the four and five bedrooms that are required. Um, so I just wanted to make that statement. And uh, it's to say that. The, this development would be a step up from where Lake Royale is. I don't say that. Because Lake Royale is a very good subdivision and I.
Uh, there was no comment on there. I'm just saying from a price point.
I say that because I live there.
No, I'm just saying from a price point perspective was all of them.
From the price point perspective, the homes that are being proposed to be, being built. I think the price point is where it is. It's because of the market.
Because of the what? I'm sorry.
The market, the way the market is today. And so, um, you know. We'll leave it right there.
Okay, can I add one more point? There was a, a comment around quality. That's actually two comments. So the, the code actually specifies you can't use vinyl, you can't use certain types of stucco. So, right, so to make a suggestion that we would make. Cheaply build homes and like even the pictures you saw already had brick fronts in the homes. And so between the code, what we've shown, and even the community meeting, we've shown other buildings that we've uh built. That have, and, and I'm not a proponent of dictating what we build on the interior. We were already very clear that ours ex- uh existing homes have hardwood flooring. They already have some of your uh upgraded. So it's for us, it's about uh equitable building. And so I almost, I shouldn't say this, but like, I almost take offense to say I'm building inferior products because I build for communities. And not for an individual person. And I build for.
Have you, have you built anything here in the Atlanta area?
Not in Atlanta.
Not in Atlanta?
Yeah, but I would argue that.
There was a, there was a question asked too that uh, I don't feel, I don't think they got answered. Why R five and not R three? As it is like the other areas.
Because we've already had conversations with Georgia Power uh and uh, and Gas South. Around what does it take to essentially build um equitable, sustainable buildings? And the cost to do the site plan requires us to do a larger uh subdivision. Uh, to do a forty-five or a forty-unit home means we're doing all gas homes. We're not talking about doing um energy-efficient homes. And so we've been looking at what does it look like? Uh, to do uh all-electric with um. Uh, lost the frame, but it, it becomes cost prohibitive to not, to do R three.
Oh, okay, so.
And not only R three is also an eighteen thousand square foot lot.
Basically, you're saying it's just from a cost perspective. That's why.
Well, it is in the market right now. Um, those lots in R three, I believe, are eighteen thousand square foot lots. Um, there are very few builders that I know around that are doing eighteen thousand square foot lots. In fact. At a seventy-five hundred square foot lot, that's larger than um many of the lots that. Um, are now being developed that we are um seeking to get approved in. Um, this jurisdiction as well as others at five thousand square feet. So the seventy-five hundred square foot lot still allows for a sizable home to be built on the property. Um, taking into consideration all of the infrastructure costs. Um, the cost of lumber, the cost of um, um, uh, concrete. Um, all those things have skyrocketed over the last few years. Um, and so it is much more expensive to build um these days. And so. You know, building at an eighteen thousand square foot lot just is not what the market is bearing right now. Um, and I still go back to the fact that um if the city did not want. These uh, a dense area, that certainly could have been addressed during the comp plan. Um, not only are.
Let me, let me step in right there and I'm glad you brought that up. That comp plan uh definitely is going to need to be amended because. A lot that went into that comp plan was not considered. From uh what the uh compu- the community wanted to see and so forth. And uh, so that's definitely going to be an issue that comes up with the city. I do agree with you when you stated um, you either fix it now or fix it later, however. The city has some burdens that they need to take care of, you know? And so that comp plan is one of the things that's definitely going to be looked at uh hard. Uh, dealing with uh, you know, so.
The comp plan was just recently re-adopted.
Yeah, it was, but it was re-adopted and not, and it was not favorably adopted. So that's what I'm saying. So with that being said, I will. At this time, uh, if there are not any more questions from the board, we'll close public comment at this time.
I, I, I do have a, a question slash comment. Uh, I, 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 I think uh. What, what's being stressed here i- is you're dealing with the area that has been, you know. Underserved in terms of, of, of quality and homes and, and. And the density of homes in that area. And I think uh, Mr. Hughes said, don't take offense. To uh, you know, the community's desire to codify. That the homes that are going to be built will be quality homes. That's the desire. And in, and you know, in the past, that hasn't always been the case. So I think. What, what is, what is being stated, there's a desire to make sure. Certain things are, are going to be put in place. And that promises made are going to be promises kept. And, and I think that's what uh the community i- is trying to uh communicate. Uh, with the different things that are being asked for.
I respect that, Mr. Perry. And um, I could make one, one response. Um. I may not live in the area, but I grew up in the area. Um, like I'm a Magdalen Middle School graduate. And I'm actually building that subdivision in honor of my mom who passed. And so I wouldn't build. Um, unquality work in her name, irrelevant to, to legislation and the language of the comp plan. But I want to respond to a neighborhood that has felt left behind. Like, I grew up a mile from there and my mom's house is still there. So I, I understand the concept of what the residents are saying.
Is there any more questions from the board members? If not, we will entertain a motion to close public comment.
Commissioner Walters, I make a motion to close public comment?
Commissioner, have a second.
You're probably moved in second. Any further discussion? You're non-staff. Would you call the roll vote, please?
Yes, roll call vote. Commissioner Hadley.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Perry.
Sorry about that, aye.
No worries. Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Weatherly. Commissioner Weatherly still here? Commissioner Weatherly? That vote passes to close public comment.
Thank you, sir. Public comment is now closed. Um, at this time, we entertain a motion to uh, approve, deny, defer case Z twenty-one dash zero one five.
So moved.
But is there a second? All right, you're none. Without a second. Without a second, does that vote, does that vote fail? Mr. Attorney.
Second.
That, that, that doesn't show without, that doesn't show without a second.
I'm sorry. Second from Devon.
Probably moved in second. You call the roll vote, sir.
I'm sorry, what was that? What was it? Approval, deny, or defer?
Commissioner Jones.
I'm sorry, um. I'm sorry, I, my, my approval is for it to be deferred. My motion, excuse me, is for it to be deferred.
Commissioner Devon, was your second in accordance with that?
I'm sorry, deferred.
Probably moved in second. Can you call the roll vote, please, staff?
Yes, sir. Uh, Commissioner Hadley.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Weatherly.
Okay, can you pass me this, the soy sauce down and a little?
Commissioner Weatherly.
Hey, I think someone was speaking. Aye.
Thank you. That vote um, passes to defer.
All right, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, um, is to adjourn. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that the meeting be adjourned.
I second that motion.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? You're non-staff. Can you call the roll? Dan, how far are you there?
Okay, I had a problem with um, muting. Sorry. Uh, Commissioner Hadley.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Weatherly.
Aye.
The vote passes to adjourn.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Be safe, everyone.
Good night.